Before we begin tonight's public hearing on the acceptance of Beverly Drive, I'd like to express my apologies to Mr. Bayshard and the board. My book would end. I truly believe that his project would have been grandfathered in due to how far along it was. So, my apologies to all with that. I'll open up the legal notes. Anybody who wishes to speak to the board about this may do so at this time.
Mayor, Justin Herzog, on behalf of Mr. Bayshard. Thank you very much for your reconsideration and we truly do appreciate it. I think it's a good thing for Rouse's Point, it's a good thing for all the parties here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. No one else wishes to speak at this time? I approve the public hearing. Now, I'll open it up. Comments from the public? I don't know whether the rest of the board at this time, they will have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of our previous meeting, a regular meeting of December 1st, a special meeting of December 6th. And I'll have copies. Is there any additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to discuss the minutes of the December 6th meeting.
Motion made by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by use of sign of eye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carried. Bill, unfortunately, the treacherous... We should have Becky here today.
Yes, it's a tragedy.
Wow.
We have one addition to the bill tonight. It's the amount of $21.50, which was with regard to our credit card for the village. We hadn't included it in the bill since it's done. So, I asked our county department to add, so it's just $21.50. That's the one addition we have no other changes to.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills to make. Motion by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by use of sign of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We received a letter dated December 8th. To address dear village of Rouse's Point. We are writing as the leadership of the company of select marksmen, a living history unit affiliated with the day of the American Revolution, British forage, and Northern forage. The company of select marksmen has initiated formal planning for an ambitious living history event scheduled for August 2006. The intent of this living history event is to commemorate the evacuation of four types of soldiers and not be presented by the British Army and their German allies in October 1777, following the surrender of British General John Roy in his army of Syracuse, New York. They go on to explain their background and so forth. And as they continue, "On Thursday morning, August 17, 2006, the company of select marksmen intended to park in Pony Rush State Park, New York. We are seeking to obtain through its permission to utilize the village of Rouse's Point Town Park, the veterans park, as our camping site on the evening of August 17, 2006. The company of select marksmen requests the following support at the village of Rouse's Point Town Park Veterans Park. Grab a lawn or for small, maximum 20 persons, living history camp. Provide access to portable water and restrooms for living history camp for one evening. Parking for one or four vehicles. And provide location for a minimum of two campfires. The bateau will be moored at the Rouse's Point Marina for the evening, along with our company modern boat. The company of select marksmen will remove any garbage and clean campsite thoroughly upon our departure on Friday morning, August 18. All of our camping equipment, firewood, and food will be transported on this four vehicle and/or bateau. The company of select marksmen will of course assume full responsibility for any damage that might occur at the community park and will assume full liability for our activities while at the park. Our unit membership will be available to interpret and meet with community residents during our stay at Rouse's Point on Thursday, August 17. We are looking forward to formally discussing this event with you and we are available to meet with you at your convenience to address any questions or concerns that you might have. Consider us to be respected. It's signed Christian Cameron Commander Company of Select Marksmen and Duckworth Coubeson Assistant Engineer Company of Select Marksmen. And this is...this Duckworth Coubeson is the US Military Academy at West Point.
I'll make a motion to allow them to come off August 17 to camp tonight. Motion by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Burns. Is there any discussion? I think this is a great idea. Fantastic. Bring some notoriety to the village. A little Black Power or a few other things. The last Sunday of July. Doesn't affect at all.
I think so. I do think it's a good idea. I think it would be a good idea for us to contact them and find them a little more thoroughly. My concern is that, you know, they're assuming full responsibility for any damage and any liability for any activity at the park. Would you please call Andre this case?
I had to call him.
Yeah. And it is the veterans park.
Yeah.
Way down the other end.
And which marina did you know which one that is?
St. Ince.
Yeah.
How many people?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty. Maximum of 20 persons for the campsite.
Do you think that maybe we better wait till a year from Andre before we vote on this?
It might be a good idea. I think we've got plenty of time. So, she's gone for the holidays. She's supposed to be back sometime in the middle of next week. And I wanted to speak directly to her just in the photo work. She...if these folks have...if they are parcel of the military academy, they might even have a insurance certificate or something. But I want to touch base with her.
Would you mind if we waited until after?
Actually, why don't we just contact the mascot, Pam? Do they get insurance?
Well, this is my motion. Withdraw. Withdraw your motion.
Maybe disable it so we get to hear from Andre?
Yeah, whatever you want. Withdraw our table.
Why don't we withdraw?
No problem. And that's all I have for first time.
Thank you, Phil. I'll see you. Reported by Mayor and Board of Trustees. Resolution accepting Beverly Drive. Phil, you want to read that resolution, please?
Whereas the plan accepted 2005 Everday Bayshard and Beverly, J. Bayshard is way closer to the village than writing a certain roadway known as Beverly Drive, and whereas the requirements of the village law 46 and 21 require a resolution to accept and dedicate said roadway as a village street, and whereas the village board of trustees now being advised to accept said roadway so often be it therefore resolved that the village does hereby accept said fifty foot wide roadway known as Beverly Drive, which said roadway is here to identify. All that certain pieces or parcel of land situated in the village of Rouse's Point, County Shem Lane, County of Clinton, State of New York, and being more particularly described as...and it's about a page of different measurements for the property. I don't think you really want to take the time for that. The above description is based upon a survey map entitled Bayshard subdivision lots 1 through 18 prepared by Earth Science Engineering DC dated November 1402, which map was filed in 2002. That's map reference number PL-C-77 on the 21st day of November 2003, being a part of the same premises conveyed by Everday Bayshard. To Everday Bayshard and Beverly, Bayshard is way by D dated April 2304 and recorded in county clerk's office made 28th of August, instrument number 2004-170384. The above parcel property is being conveyed and dedicated to the village of Rouse's Point for the specific intention not saying the use of the village's road. We have further resolved upon delivery to the village attorney of the appropriate deed and affidavit entitled insurance policy as required by chapter 57 of the village code, and provided said documents entitled are bound to be in order and are bound to be free and clear of all leak and any taxes of said deed shall be accepted and recorded and said road shall be deemed thereafter dedicated in name Beverly Drive. And that will require a roll call vote and a motion to move it second. Mr. Herzog, just so you know, the attachment aid which describes the boundaries of the property, I believe that's what Mr. Renee and you had talked about and there were some changes. I'm going to have to talk with Tom or you can...that's the only piece on the transfer of the deed that we're going to have to have fixed or corrected.
Yeah, what I did is I went ahead and had the Bayshard just sign it. It's based on the description that we ran.
Okay, and I guess you're Mr. Renee, but you don't know that. So, you're all set on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept that resolution. I'll second that. Motion by Trustee Moore, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. A roll call vote, Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. The next thing on my agenda is to ask for an executive session to discuss pending litigation, legislation. And I put that in form of a motion. I'll second that. Okay, roll call vote to Trustee Jefferson. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. The last thing on my agenda is a discussion of 4th of July celebration. As you know, we have no term. And we have not moved forward on this. And we really need to decide whether or not it's going to be done. Secondly, how long the celebration we're going to have and how far we're going to go. There's a lot unknown this year. Some of the people that we have depended on in the last two to three years are not going to be able to workforce this year. And it stands right now, if we don't get somebody within the next two or three weeks, they might well cancel it because it's time to start going getting your dance for parades and getting your stuff out. I did have an email from the Ross's Point High School reunion group stating that they're planning to have their celebration on the 30th of June and the 2nd of July. I don't know just what...I know like it's Friday and Saturday. So, they sent out everybody about the parade, the in ticket place on Sunday. I emailed them back and said, doesn't look like it'll be a parade at this time. And I have an inquiry from one person wanting to know what would be involved in the charity. They would like a list of duties. It's unfortunate that they come to this. It's back to life. If you realize, I had just an email from New York State Association of Parties. It's got nothing to do with parades, but it has something to do with about volunteering. And young people don't want to volunteer. And that's what you're going on to say. And just give you some highlights what it means to people. The number of New York State Volunteer Apartments have dropped from 140,000 to 90,000. And that could mean, if we had to go to paid departments, you're talking $7 billion a year of money. I don't know the answer. There's a lot of paper reporting. The state with all their mandates, there's no money. Young people today, this day, I mean, they have nothing to do. Just too much out there for you to do. Our 4th of July is in that same boat. I look forward to going out there. By next meeting, I think we should have an answer.
Takes up a lot of time, that's for sure. More than one or two people can handle. Need a group from eight or ten people. I think our depending on what the board decides with regard to this. I think our biggest concern in determining age you want to do it and the period of time you want to have, whether you want to have it Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, or if you just have an abbreviated version. If we could get someone to help work on the parade or organize the parade with us. We've done a lot out of our office, as you all know, in the past. We're certainly willing to do certain things, but one of the huge losses that we've experienced this year are merchants. They're not available for the organization for the kids' activities on Saturday. They spend an enormous amount of time going around seeking donations, coming up with games and actually running them that's Saturday. So, those are issues that, you know, we can... One of the suggestions I had discussed briefly with a couple of you folks is instead of doing this newspaper flyer, doing a poster which would save a considerable amount of time. But the two big issues are if you want to, depending on how free you should own, you want to have it. Do you want to...what about the Saturday issue and can we get somebody to work on the parade? I don't know if Mr. O'Brien had any changes in mind on that.
Make that parade harder.
And that's another thing we really, I really need to do with the street. I didn't sign the contract for the fireworks this past summer because there was no chairman and no one really knew who was going to take the lead on that. But if you're going to have them, we have to commit to these people and hopefully they're still available. So, it is really time, crunch time to make some decisions.
I think about it more. And other than that, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I hope 2006 is a little better than 2005. I'm going to talk here. Trustee Jefferson? I just have one item on my agenda tonight. I'll make a motion to request an executive session to discuss personnel, public board's personnel. Moved by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Moore. Roll call vote, Trustee Jefferson. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. And that's it?
That's all I have for me.
Thank you, Trustee Jefferson. Trustee Penfield.
I have nothing to report.
You're getting off pretty easy here the last couple of weeks.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Trustee Penfield. Trustee Moore.
Yes, I got to do a request permission for Brian Delmo on the meeting of 30 attend Monday, 7:00 hour in Podston on January 10, 2006. Sponsored by Northern New York Water Works at total price of $56. I'm going to make any more motions.
I'll second that. Motion by Trustee Moore, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by use of sign of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, one more thing. Let's make a motion of total law number four of the year 2005, which calls the developer's sponsor of paving their development.
Motion by Trustee Moore, seconded by Trustee Penfield. Any discussion? Now, this is the one we rescinded and redoing. Is there a roll call? Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Burns.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay, is that it?
Yes, I will go.
Thank you, Trustee Moore. Trustee Burns?
Nothing particular that... I went to see my daughter Tuesday night, trapped around on the grandfather below board.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
A mile was under my... And a daughter getting married in January.
A lot of activities planned. One old? That it, John? Thank you, Trustee Burns. Phil?
I didn't have anything, but I came up with a couple of things. The chairs, we had a dead opening last week and I was nervous, dead opening the bids, we were soliciting bids. Nobody did on them. I'd like to recommend that we extend that until Friday, the 30th of December, if that's okay with you folks. And the other thing, our stray voltage testing and inspection requirements that were required to do by Public Service Commission are really very pleased and very proud and very happy, whatever adjective you want to use. A real big thank you to everyone in our electric department for all their hard work. We are reporting on all our paperwork was due by this coming January 15 and it was mailed today. So, I thought we were going to be right to the wire, but everybody came through and very commendable, did a real nice job. So, I thank everybody in the electric department for all their work on this. Everyone worked very, very hard. That's all I have.
Thank you, Phil. And I think the board says thank you to the electrical group because I know what was involved. They had to check every single piece of equipment that had a voltage on it in the village. Nothing involved with that. That's because some lady got knocked out in New York City on manhole cover. Okay, is that it, Phil?
That's it.
Doug?
Yes, last board meeting, I talked about lead and copper and how I was going to be meeting with people to find out where Gary Molesky to discuss the lead and copper control that we have. And I had the meeting and I'm pleased to announce that the water department and the village have now all the requirements that the health department placed on us as a result of that violation and that village engineer's office in conjunction with the water department is capitalizing on the work that has been done by physical associates over the last four or five years. So, that in the first quarter of next year, we will be able to run a pilot study on existing equipment in the water plant to utilize new chemicals for the control of corrosion of lead and copper. And we'll be working very closely with the health department so that we can minimize the amount of chemical we inject so that we can keep the constant backfire of the new.
I think the question is down in the month of...we're going to be injecting a chemical to paint their copper knight issues.
Yes.
And I just say I'm taking ahead to the question down in the month of...is there something that you tell people about that particular chemical? Color and age?
No, no, no. There's no color issue. The chemical is called Sea Quest and it's an agent that goes in the water and it creates a film, a film coating on the lead and copper fiddies so that it survives a barrier between the lead and copper and the water so there's no contact, so there's no corrosion. It's a phosphate and it's...
This is approved and it works?
Yes, this is favored by the local health department and it's also a big favorite of the regional health department in San Agate. And it's been the chemical of choice for the last four or five years. And it's been there, physical associates recommended it. And so, it's been coming and it's just the time is here, so we're going to have to start it. Any side effects or anything? The only...the only side effect is maybe we have to watch the phosphate level at the sewer plant, which we will, we'll be talking to Tom about that. So, the phosphate will... Preliminary calculation, the takeout will be a problem here. In a related issue, we received correspondence from one of the residents of the village regarding tryhallow net banks, PHMs, which are disinfection byproducts. And disinfection byproducts are formed in our water because we use chlorine as a disinfectant to dissolve water that we take in the lake. And the chlorine not only kills the bacteria that infects the water, it reacts with organics in the water to form these disinfection byproducts. And this village resident is Steve Corcoran, former water plant operator, retired. And Steve, I know that you know that the village of Rouse's Point has safe drinking water. And it's as safe as it always has been. And what's happened is that over time, the level that the government allows for disinfection byproducts has been dropping and dropping. So, our THMs have always been here and the government is coming down the needers. So, we've seen this coming for four or five years and now it's kind of touch and go. One quarter we're okay, the next quarter we're not. So, every time we're not okay, we get a notice from the health department. And so, what we're doing is we're working with the health department to study what we may need to do long term for disinfection byproducts. Chief Water Plant Operator Gary Molesky has also contacted Penn State University and is talking with an expert on powdered activated carbon, which is one of the resources that you know we have at the water plant. And so, we're doing what we can and we're also going to see what happens with our lead and copper control because the vendor has indicated that there may be a beneficial side effect by using this Sea Quest to control lead and copper. It might minimize our disinfection byproducts. So, we're going to see how next quarter's pilot study goes and then we're working with the health department on the disinfection byproducts. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Doug, do you have anything to add to our idea of what costs on that chemical? Because we're going to be starting our budget from this.
For the lead and copper, I do think the TCMs are still far. For the lead and copper, right now, this is very preliminary. It could be $6,000 a year. And that's where we come in, working with the health department to find out what's the least amount we have to supply so that it costs that. So, we'll be working more closely next month with Gary and fine tuning those numbers for...
Do you know, you need time for painting the chemicals, it's something you have to do.
No, it's certainly notable. It's not...it's out there. Everybody's using it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Melissa? That's enough.
Yeah, I changed my type in the last meeting. This is a...we have a copy of the...putting your packet of color lead and copper paint on that Fort Montgomery interpretive panel. I mean, you could just pass it around. Roger Harwood delivered it for us. That is one of the two interpretive panels that Roger wrote a grant application for to be placed on the old causeways. One on the Vermont side on their fishing pier, one on the causeway here to give a description of the ruins of Fort Montgomery. And he dropped that off so that we could put it before the board for any comments that you have. It's currently just been designed. Changes can be made and then the designer will be authorized to go ahead and do the, actually do the panels. And just for your information, the right side is in French and the title will also be done in French. It's in English twice, but on the right side, the title will be in French.
There's the French.
Right, but just the title didn't get, for whatever reason, the title didn't end up in French, the second title.
I have one question. Are you doing your comments now?
Yes.
Where the star is, where it says you are here and then Rouse's Point, is there any other way to label that so that your Rouse's Point is a little closer to where the star is?
I see what you're saying. It looks like Rouse's Point is significantly to the south because of the way it's done. I would think so.
I don't know how, I mean, I can see not wanting to overrate where the lake is.
Right. Why don't I draw that to their attention?
Just to see if they can figure it out. If they can't, they can't. That would be the only thing that I thought that I thought was good.
And actually, even the star is quite a bit south and west of where it really should be because it should be right up.
Yeah.
Right.
They may not be able to, but that's something that I noticed.
Well, I can certainly draw that to their attention.
I think we need a motion that...
I think at this point...
I think we approved that last meeting.
You're all set. It's just a matter of if you had any comments. Roger dropped one off over in Albert, brought one to the pods as the owner of the property. The little box down in the corner where it says logo number two, I think the thinking would be we would put the village seal, the village of Rouse's Point seal there on our side, probably the town of Albert over on the other side as co-sponsors with the basin program. And when, I read this, it was clear that they intended it for that viewing area. One thing we had talked about with Roger over a year ago when he was here was a small sign on Route 2 directing people to the overlook and that might be something we want to think about for the spring. Because there'll be no way to know that that panel is there unless we direct people after they cross the bridge or before they cross the bridge. they cross the bridge or before they cross the bridge.
Is there some really real other reasons for them to drag down there?
No. You're likely to have a visit from the board patrol if you drag down there. We've taken several consultants down and I don't know, I guess it was Dick May from us with you one time and the board patrol followed us down. So, you know, it, I don't think people probably wouldn't find it.
Do you think by placing a plaque that by the causeway that it would be attractive and maybe fresh packs in the area? I mean, once you see the fort and you see the road there, you think that they'll wanna... I mean, I would look at this as a teaser, invite them to come over and look at this plaque.
You know, John, that's probably a good idea to add a line that it is private property and, you know, in most other things on the fort, they put that in because they are concerned. That's a good point.
When I first read this, I was keeping up with everything that's going on in the village and now sitting here like that in Florida. I thought maybe somehow the pods had donated that the fort to the village. Now we're putting all these signs up that they do donate the fort.
Right, right, no.
It'd be great if they did.
Right, but that's definitely not the case and I know they're very, very interested in keeping people out of there because it's dangerous. It's, you know, so that's a good idea to have some sort of disclaimer at the bottom that it's private property and that it's definitely unsafe. Good point. I'll get those to, back to Roger. Just one other quick, quick thing, oh, two things. That select marksman, that is just such an exciting opportunity to do some sort of an event, I think, when they're in town. It would be great to have the reenactment. Just to pass on to you, I saw a study somewhere, they are generally very, very well-heeled people. They spend thousands of dollars as part of this hobby and it would be great exposure, I think, for the village if we can get them here and maybe, maybe if they'd be willing to do some kind of a presentation, it'd be nice to...
Can I add a note?
It would be great. I wondered if I could get any thoughts that you might have in terms of scenic byways grant application. The grants are due at the end of January. Last year's grants still have not been announced yet, so this is our usual very long lead time. But I was thinking about a small application, maybe around twenty-five thousand dollars for the entrance point to the village where Route Two intersects with Lake Street. One of the enhancements that was recommended in our downtown and waterfront plan draft was a Rousas Point sign that would have some nice landscaping and that would direct people to the downtown. We've also had recommendations of waterfront signs to get people to waterfront and then also downtown signs as you come into town. So that's what I was thinking about for the application. Does that sound like something the board would be interested in?
Anything we can just state for more?
Okay, and this is, this is a super funding opportunity because it's eighty percent grant, twenty percent match. And Phil and I were talking today and between administration and the DPW's contributions should be an easy one to match with no cash at all. So if anyone has any other thoughts on, on that?
I think that's a great idea. Signage has been an issue we've talked about for a long time. It's expensive. We could get something like this, well-designed sign for what we need, it's a great way to do it.
I need a motion on that, Phil?
I think it would be gangster. Asking for Melissa to apply for a grant, twenty-five thousand for signage.
I'll make that motion, Phil. Oh, sorry. Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burts. Any other discussion? There are a lot of discussion, all of the favor will by you to side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Open meeting to the public at this time. All right, we're for recess. Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanna wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. We're for a motion for recess.
I'll make a motion for recess.
All in favor? Aye. I didn't think you'd be in the discussion. We're in recess, five minutes.
How did you get it, not do that?